Good afternoon, everybody. We are meeting today for the purpose of reorganization and a couple of other things really quickly. I'd like to start off with a call to order and an establishment of a quorum with Ms. Lisa Stevens.
Dr. Michael Hubbard from Bowling Green District, Mr. Lydell Fortune representing the Mattapniya District, Ms. Allison Sears representing the Western Caroline District, Mr. Calvin Taylor representing the Port Royal District, Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells representing the Reedy Church District, Mr. Sean Kelly representing the Madison District, Dr. Sarah Calverick Superintendent of Schools, and I'm Lisa Stevens Clerk of the Board. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to item D with the indication with Mr. Calvin Taylor. Mr. Taylor?
I'll just say welcome back to everybody and Happy New Year. Let's bow our heads for prayer. My Father in heaven, we come to thee at this hour thanking thee for all the blessings that thou have given us. We thank thee for this opportunity to meet and to come together and to take care of the business of the students of Caroline County. We ask thee for wisdom and guidance. Give us the ability to make those decisions that prove to be in the best interest of all the folks that we serve. These are all the blessings that we ask in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And if you please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll seek a motion for approval of the January 11th, 2024 agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. At this time, I will hand the gavel over to Dr. Calverick for the purposes of reorganization.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Today's meeting is focused on the reorganization of the Caroline County Public School Board. Pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 22.1-72, the board is required to establish a meeting schedule for the coming year and Section 22.1-76 mandates that the board organize or reorganize annually with the election of officers at this first meeting in January. This reorganization includes the selection of the Chair, Vice Chair, approval of the Clerk, Deputy Clerk, superintendents designee to attend meetings in the absence of the superintendent, student school board representative, approval of the meeting schedule for this calendar year, and confirmation of the school board and clerk code of ethics. As superintendent, I will preside at the selection of the Chair and then transfer the gavel to the newly elected Chair. The Chair has multiple responsibilities for which the Vice Chair will fill in as needed. Some of these responsibilities are the following: presides at regular meetings, special call meetings, workshops, joint meetings with the Board of Supervisors, and school board closed session meetings; facilitates and moderates discussion among board members seeking consensus as appropriate using Robert's Rules of Order; prepares board committee assignments; communicates regularly with other board members keeping them informed of school matters; maintains ongoing contact with the superintendent on relevant school matters; prepares board agendas with the superintendent; takes the lead on contract negotiation, evaluation, and goal setting with the superintendent; takes the lead on developing priorities for school board annual goal setting and board professional development; prepares and delivers in conjunction with Vice Chair and the superintendent the approved school board budget presentation to the Board of Supervisors; signs contracts, official minutes, and resolutions approved by the board; approves board member local travel reimbursements online and signs board member expense reimbursement vouchers. These activities and duties require considerable time and dedication by the Chair and Vice Chair. This list is not all-inclusive but does provide some idea of what is entailed with the duties and responsibilities of the Chair and ultimately the Vice Chair if needed. These leadership positions are critical to the effectiveness of the board, and now we will proceed with the selection process. Board members, I will begin with opening the floor for nominations for Chair of the Caroline County School Board for the 2024 calendar year.
Dr. Calverick, I would like to nominate Mr. Sean Kelly to be the Chair for the School Board for this upcoming year.
Mr. Kelly has been nominated as the first nomination for Chair. Are there any other nominations?
I call for the question.
Hearing none, may I have a motion to close nominations for Chair?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, Ms. Stevens. Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. I will pass the gavel back to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
I have a little bit more of a script to read. Excuse me, I did not do my fulfill my full duties. At this moment, I congratulate our newly selected Chair, Mr. Kelly, and pass the gavel as a symbol of the duties and responsibilities that accompany this position. Our fellow board members pledge their support to you as Chair as we move forward. We look forward to working with you in anticipation of the leadership that you will provide to this board. Now, Mr. Kelly, the newly elected Chair will continue with the reorganization of the board.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call for nominations for Vice Chair.
Chairman Kelly, I would like to nominate Calvin Taylor for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close nominations for the Vice Chair?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for nomination for Calvin Taylor for the Vice Chair. Please call for the roll.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Calvin Taylor, you are now the Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Superintendent, recommendation for Clerk of the Board?
Thank you. I recommend Ms. Lisa Stevens as Clerk of the Board.
Is there a motion to approve this nomination?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any other recommendations? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. Deputy Clerk of the Board?
I recommend Terry Harrison as Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Is there a motion for approval of Terry Harrison as Deputy Clerk?
Who is Terry Harrison?
She is the current Deputy Clerk of the Board and she is the Administrative Assistant in our IT Department. She has yet to serve in the capacity. Lisa is very responsible and timely, so we haven't had to use her backup role. But she is there in case we do. And does attend conferences, so she's trained. Thank you.
I would so move.
All right. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. Superintendent's Designee?
The Superintendent's Designee is Dr. Herbert Monroe, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction.
Is there a motion for approval of Dr. Monroe as the Superintendent's Designee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. Student School Board Representative?
We will be announcing our student school board name at the January 29th School Board Meeting where the person selected this morning in our interview series will be able to speak at the podium, introduce his or herself, and then assume the role. We were able to conduct interviews this morning. Mrs. or Dr. Rollins Fells was our school board representative. It was comprised of myself, Dr. Neighbors, who is the Director of Secondary, as well as Mr. Jess, the School Principal. It is always a rising senior that will be serving for that year-long capacity. We had four candidates, one of whom elected not to attend. So we had three very diverse in interest, in gender, et cetera, candidates that really represented themselves well. We feel strongly about the candidate of choice and we look forward to introducing him or her on January 29th once they are fully informed and receive their welcome onboard letter. But at this time, I'm simply asking for the board's support for continuation of a student school board rep.
Is there any discussion?
You need a motion for that?
Yeah, we need a motion. Yes, sir.
Okay, I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion regarding a student school board rep position? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. Motion to approve the board calendar for the 2024 year, which includes the following date, which is, which are all listed there. And before we approve this, there are certain times where we do, we will have to eventually move dates when things conflict with other items such as the opening of school or what have you that happens. But is there a motion to approve the board calendar as presented?
Mr. Kelly, can you, just for the sake of the public, read that?
Sure. January 29th, 2024, February 12th, 2024, March 11th, 2024, April 8th, 2024, May 13th, 2024, June 10th, 2024, August 12th, 2024, September 9th, 2024, October the 14th, 2024, November 11th, 2024, and December 9th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Before, can you also?
At 6:30. Oh, 5:30 is the general session. On January the 29th, 2024, we have our 5:30 general session and at 6:30, the budget public hearing will take place, meaning that we will start the meeting at 5:30 and then at 6:30, we will stop because by law, we have to have a public hearing. So we do it on the same day. Yes, sir.
Is the general session, is that a public session?
Yes.
It is. And where can folks find this schedule?
Yeah, it's, well, it's on Board Docs, but we also put it on the website for the School Division.
It's also included in the monthly CCPS Express when we recap the month's meeting and then we also offer that next month's date.
And the reason I say that is because I've challenged the parents of my district to attend at least one in-person session. And their response back was, we will. However, we need to know where those dates, when those dates are.
If you go to ccps.us and there's a drop-down menu that says School Board, you click on it and usually the dates are all right there. It'll have all the scheduled dates and times.
We will verify that these new dates are uploaded on our website. We also will include them in the February 1st CCPS Express to help accommodate your, your challenge.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is it time for conversation?
We haven't had a motion yet. Is there a motion to approve the dates and times? 5:30 will be our, the time of our regularly scheduled meeting on those dates mentioned. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
I only have a question for the Clerk of the Board just to verify that we do not need to make note of which of these sessions will also include a workshop.
We can add that to, typically every meeting has a workshop unless there's a change, but 4:30 is our workshop time.
Yep, meeting.
And those are open to the public as well.
I do know that this past year, we did, I believe, alter the calendar to eliminate the July workshop only because during the summer months, there tends to be a large amount of vacation period. I didn't know if that was something we wanted to entertain and if so, just note that. Otherwise, we can make an amendment if we so feel the need to change as we move along. Just didn't want to overlook that if that was the will of the board.
And also, you know, you have themes generally at these workshops and it would be kinda good if we could attach the themes. So not everyone's going to come to all workshops, but if a parent has a specific focus, you know, item, that would might be a way to vector them.
Sure. And sometimes those themes are established closer to the date versus in January for November. So what we'll do is we'll make sure we have good vehicles for communicating that theme once they're established.
Comes available prior to, whenever, when I go up on Board Docs, that's when it's up there. And a lot of times, I'm sure you've noticed in your short time on the board that when we have requested information and it's our information and we don't necessarily, if the people want to see it, they're more than welcome to. But that's when we try to come in at 4:30 then and leave it, you know, a decent hour than come in at 6:00 and leave it too. But is that, so the motion, just to be clear, Mr. Taylor, was to approve the dates as presented with the time at 5:30 and workshop at 4:30 with topics to be determined.
Right.
And seconded?
Correct. It was noted that July 8th was omitted when the list was read aloud, so we do just want to duly note that July 8th is also a board meeting.
Yes, July 8th. Thank you.
I have a question about the August date. Generally, our pattern is that board meetings are the second Monday of each month so that the community can keep up with that. But does that conflict with the first day of school? Or do we need to wait and approve?
We haven't approved the calendar yet.
Okay. But it is the first day of school, about the proposed calendars.
Well, one of them, because we might, we might go two days early as well.
So if we could just make a note that in our forecast, when we forecast the meetings, to make a note about August.
Right, because it might be August 19th.
Gotcha. My motion, my second still stands with the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. That is, let's see. Next up on the agenda then. Nope. There are more on the back. Oh, code of ethics. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Motion to reaffirm the code of ethics for school board members and the clerk code of ethics as specified in board policy. Is there a motion?
And if they're attached in Board Docs, I'm sorry.
I would so move. The code of ethics approved before, before. The policies are where?
Code of Ethics and for both school board members and for the clerk are in Board Docs.
But there's the copies they have to sign.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly, I don't want to be out of order. There is a motion on the floor.
For approval?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Thank you, Dr. Rollins Fells. And the V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members is presented. Our copies are with you. And we do all have to sign this today if it is approved as presented.
You can read it.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly, if you could, our general practice is to go through each one of them. So if you could.
And I don't, they all have copies, Lisa?
It's in Board Docs.
Okay.
Oh, I can read it.
You can read it.
"As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education. And to that end, I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and nation. I will attend scheduled board meetings. I will come to board meetings informed concerned, concerning the issues, under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators. I will encourage individual board members, board member expression of opinion and establish an open, two-way communication process with all segments of the community. I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decision or commitments that might compromise the board or administration. I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs such as those sponsored by my state and national school board associations. I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior and conduct as a public school board member." And then we sign.
I have one question. This clerk, the clerk articulates legal, our legal counsel is who?
Stacy Haney and PAC Fuwananana Chip. I will send that to you in email if that is acceptable. And I will do that, actually, I will include that in tomorrow's Friday update to the school board, so all six of you have that name. Typically, anytime there is a desire to have access to legal, and this goes for the senior staff as well as board members, you would speak to of Mr. Kelly, who is our new board chair, and/or myself, and then we would either have you speak directly to that person or it would go through the board chair.
Sure, sure. But the question would be more like, if we had a question, you know?
Yeah. And, and, and along, and the, it's, lawyers love, they get paid by the hour. So when we have six board members calling a lawyer differently, right? They, they love and they build, they build a school system in a heartbeat. So it's better if we have our questions in a row and we know what we're asking so before we get our legal response.
And in relation to a collective need, at times, we have done phone conferences in closed session where the closed session topic was attorney-client privilege. We've also had larger issues, a handful of occasions that possibly it was easier for the attorney to come on site. So we just evaluate situationally and make our decisions accordingly. Great question.
All right. So the previous question, although it was a motion and a second for the code of ethics for school board members, as I read. Were there any additional questions or comments regarding the code of ethics?
Mr. Chair, if I can just make a comment. I think that us having this collective agreement and establishing a new board is very important. It is key to our culture and it has been key to our success as a master board. So I'm in full support of that. And that's my comment for the record.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes. And now trying to see where we are. So we are moving to item three, Business Meeting Items, Part A, Ethics Counsel Statement of Economic Interests.
Caroline County School Board, before you, you have your statement of economic interest. It is a requirement of a local board and to, and a local elected official to submit those by February 1st to the clerk's office. So you may take them home and bring them back at the January 29th meeting to be within your timeframe or you may have it in the clerk's office by February 1st. After that date, you could be fined legally $200 or more. And so please have those in by February 1st.
And if you have any questions in the completion of the process, please feel free to reach out to the clerk.
Painful but joyful. Now, I do one of these for the state. Can I just copy what I've done, submit it to the state and bring in?
As long as it's in with.
It's the same.
It cannot be filled out prior to, there are dates that are legal. I have to look at the dates.
Oh, no, no. Statewide, everyone has to have it done by February 1st.
Yes. But it can't be submitted prior to January 1st. So as long as it's a current.
Yeah, okay.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a way to complete it online? I know in prior board service, we were able to complete it electronic?
It has to be maintained in the clerk's office and each of you have a file, so I have to have a physical copy.
So I do that the file is pulled by the auditors annually. They will look at each one of them and ensure that they're in and signed by February 1st. So we will get an audit point if they are not received by that date.
And it's for all board members, even incoming?
Yes, yes, that's what, all board members.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, moving on to item D, FOIA and COIA, Requirement of School Board Members.
Again, Caroline County School Board, thank you. You are required within a two-year period to have FOIA and COIA training. So a majority of our school board members get that training at the annual convention through V S B A. So please, when you're signing up for your classes, make sure you attend those. And I need documentation in my office. I do know that the COIA training, I've heard, is not giving you a certificate. So if you can screen print something with your phone, I just need a date recorded on the clerk's office. And so those expire every two years. So just kinda, I keep a date log for your information in case you need to know when your last time was. But again, that's FOIA and COIA and you have to get it within a certain amount of days of election and signing on to be a board member. So you have, I believe it's 30 days, but I can't remember off the top of my head. But, so our newest board members need to jump on that, which you already have. So thank you very much.
I can state that I do, they do offer it at the annual convention in November. If you attend, I think it's the Legislative Advocacy Conference in September, which is really, really interesting. There's a lot of stuff there. But they rotate it, so one year will be FOIA, the next year is COIA. So it's, it's good for two years if you just go to the conference and they work through everything, so you don't have to worry about constantly jumping through the hoops. That's what I find is the easiest way to do it. Any other discussion regarding item B?
I apologize, that can be online as well.
Through SBA, right?
It, the one I sent to you guys on, it's, I don't know that, was that one through the V S B A? I don't think that, I think that was through the Council.
Because I tried to go through the V S SBA and you have to remember and all, and whatnot, yeah, so.
Yeah, just if, the easiest one is the one that I sent through an email and I can re-mail it if needed to.
It's in our email from January 5th. For click reference.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, moving on to item C, school board committee responsibilities. I have contacted each of you individually multiple times, and this is the list that we have drafted and worked through, trying to come up with an echo of division of labor. Is there, does there need to be a vote for this?
No, there does not. We simply wanted you to read through the list, so that the public understood each of the committees that our six elected officials are associated with.
And I'd just like to remind the new board, because I know we have three new board members here, that you, two board members at any location is totally fine, but once there's three or more, it constitutes a meeting. So just, you're obviously free and welcome to go to any board meeting, but, you know, we don't want a situation where five board meetings, five board members would show up at one particular committee event. So we'll start at the top. Sean Kelly is the C C P S Gifted Advisory Committee, the Instructional Calendar Committee, the Governing Board for the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School and the Lab School at the University of Mary Washington. Allison Sears is going to be on the, will be the Board Representative for the Commonwealth Governor's School on the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee, the Special Education Committee, and she is going to be the alternate to the V S B A Annual Convention. Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells will continue with the Career and Tech Ed Committee, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and the Safe and Drug-Free School Committee. Liddell Fortune will be a part of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, the Instructional Calendar Committee, and the Caroline Educational Foundation Committee. Dr. Michael Hubbard will participate as a member of the Career and Technical Education Committee, the Special Education Committee, the Coronavirus Relief Funds Committee, and the Athletic Advisory Committee. And Calvin Taylor will be a member of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. He will be our delegate for the V S B A, V S B A Annual Convention, and the Athletic Advisory, as well as the Preschool Policy Council. I would also like to remind the board, especially those of you that are new, that in, I think it's usually in June or July, the V S B A will ask us to formally appoint Calvin Taylor as the delegate for the V S B A. So we will call for a vote, so we will not have an opportunity to escape.
Can't get out of it.
Moving on then, with our next item of business is closed session. Is there a motion for approval to enter into closed session?
Some move.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, motion passes, and we are now in closed session.
Alright, so at this time we will come back from closed session. Is there a motion to enter into open session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Motion passes and just at this time the board chair will seek a motion for the reason that we went into closed session which was to for the purpose of the superintendent's personnel agenda for the discussion of appointments, resignations, position changes, corrections, facility discussions, stipends, finance services, timesheets, and substitutes as authorized by sections two dot two dash three seven one one A subsection one of the code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Motion passes. Certification of closed session. Please certify that the reason, the only thing we discussed during closed session were the items that were just previously mentioned in the previous motion. Please say, please certify when I call your name. Mr. Liddell Fortune.
I so certify.
Dr. Hubbard.
So certify.
Ms. Sears.
So certify.
Dr. Rollins-Fells.
I so certify.
Mr. Taylor.
I so certify.
And the board certifies as, the board chair certifies as well. At this time the chair will seek a motion for approval of the superintendent's personnel agenda.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now please call for the vote.
Dr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune.
Aye.
Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Motion passes. Tomorrow, January the twelfth, one thirty to four thirty is orientation of our three new board members. CCPS is closed on January the fifteenth. January twenty-second is the V S B A Capitol Conference. Nine thirty, we will meet with delegate Bobby O'Rourke at ten thirty. We will meet with Senator McDougall. We have, I'm sorry, so sorry, we have requested for more delegates and awaiting responses. The clerk will stay in contact to try to obtain more morning meetings. Lunch will be provided. V S B A conference to fill out the rest of the day. On January the twenty-third, new board member, V S B A orientation, new chair and vice chair orientation. And on January twenty-ninth is our regular school board meeting at Caroline Middle School. Workshop will be at four thirty and the regular scheduled meeting will begin at five thirty. Is there a motion for approval of adjournment?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are closed.